Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. Today is Monday, May 8th. My name is Alyssa Olson and I am the President of the Planning Commission. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public access and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. At this time, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll to verify a quorum.
Alfer.
Present.
Vaxley.
Here.
Campbell. Conley.
Present.
Ford. Kosky.
Present.
Marwa.
Meyer.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
We have six members present.
All right, we have a quorum. With that, we will proceed to the agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's Legislative Information Management System, which is available at limbs.mineapolismn.gov. And there are also copies on the counter by the clerk. We will begin with acceptance of the minutes from April 24th, 2023. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Move of her votes. Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion passes and the minutes are adopted. Before we get started on sorting the public hearing agenda for today, I just want to note that I know many of you are here for the Hiawatha Maintenance Facility Roof Depot site. We will be discussing that item and it will not be approved on consent, but we do have some other pieces of business to cover before that. There's not a ton of people, but if anyone would feel more comfortable sitting in the room across the hall, there's a live stream in there and when we get to that item, you could come in here at that time. Let's see here. All right, with that being said, our next order of business is to organize the public hearing agenda, which is again available at limbs.mineapolismn.gov. I'm going to read through the agenda items and numbers and the addresses and state whether they're slated for consent or discussion. Consent items will be passed without discussion by the board. We will be adhering to the staff recommendation listed on the agenda in the items recommended motion section. Any conditions listed in that section will also apply. So if you agree with this recommendation and the stated conditions, you don't need to do anything and we will pass that item as recommended. If you have questions following that, you can contact the staff assigned to that item. If you disagree with the recommended motions, you can raise your hand and let us know and we will take that item and we will put it on our discussion agenda. And I'll read through the list twice tonight because we have quite a few items. All right, so we have the following items on our agenda this evening. Item number four is 600 Park Ave. And Commissioner Meyer has pulled this item for discussion, so we will discuss item number four. Item number five is 200 South Fifth Street. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone here to speak against staff recommendation on item number five? All right, we'll put item number five on consent. Item number six, vacation of a water main and storm sewer easement between Hennepin Avenue and Fremont Avenue South near Seven Points Mall. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone here to speak against staff recommendation on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll put item six on consent. Item seven is 2605 Broadway Street Northeast. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone here to speak against staff recommendation on item number seven? Seeing none, we'll put item seven on consent. Item number eight is 411 East 38th Street. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone here to speak against staff recommendation on item number eight? Seeing none, we'll put item eight on consent. Item number nine is 828th Street East, 2753 Chicago Avenue, 2701 Elliott Avenue, 2742 10th Avenue South, 924 28th Street East, 916 28th Street East, and 920 28th Street East. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone here to speak against staff recommendation on this item? Item number nine. Seeing none, we'll put item nine on consent. Item 10 is 1924 26th Street East. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone here to speak against staff recommendation on item 10? Seeing none, we'll put item 10 on consent. Item 11 is 5757 Irving Avenue South. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone here to speak against staff recommendation on item number 11? Seeing none, we'll put item 11 on consent. And then number 12 is Hiawatha Maintenance Facility. As previously stated, we will discuss this item. All right, I'm going to read through the addresses one more time or the numbers. If you think you don't know what item you may want to speak on, now would be the time to speak up. All right, number four, 600 Park Ave. Number five, 200 South Fifth Street. Number six, vacation of a water main. Number seven, 2605 Broadway Street Northeast. Number eight, 411 East 38th Street. Number nine, 828th Street East. There are a lot of addresses, I'm not going to read them all. Okay? Item 10, 1924 26th Street East. Item 11, 5757 Irving Avenue South. And then item 12, Hiawatha Maintenance Facility, we will discuss. All right, so let's review. We will discuss items number four and 12. And on consent, we have items five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. Commissioners, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion passes and the agenda has been adopted. We'll proceed to handle the public hearing agenda in this order. First, I'll open the public hearing for our consent items and approve those items. After we've dealt with those items, we can proceed to our two discussion items.
Madam President, could I interrupt for just one moment? I just wanted to mention, at the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned the live broadcast of this meeting. I just want to mention for the record, in case commissioners or anyone in the audience is getting messages, our YouTube livestream is not currently working. It's been a problem all day, but the meeting is still being broadcast on cable and the meeting is also being recorded, so it will be uploaded to YouTube right after the meeting. But just to note for the record that the YouTube channel is not currently broadcasting live.
Great, thank you. All right, so we are on our consent items. This is for items five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, or 11. If there's anyone here who would like to speak on these items, I'll open the public hearing now. You can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comments. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on the consent agenda. Commissioners, do I have a motion to adopt items five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 on consent?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion passes. So if you were here for items five through 11, those items have been approved. Good luck with your projects. All right, we will now move on to our discussion items and I'm going to explain how those are going to work. So we will have presentations and take public testimony for these items and deliberate on them and then make a decision. After the public testimony has been heard for each discussion item, I will close the public hearing for that agenda item. Once I close the public hearing for an item, no additional public testimony can be taken, however, staff may still be asked to answer questions from the board. After the public hearing for an item is closed, board members will discuss and then act on motions. There's a lot of people in the room to testify this evening, so we'll be limiting time to two minutes per person, so if you've prepared comments, plan on two minutes. And we do have a timer, so you can keep track of how much time has gone by, but that makes sure everyone has time to speak on the items. All right, so our first discussion item is item number four, 600 Park Ave. And staff is Hillary DeVore.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is an item that was continued from a previous Planning Commission meeting, which we did not open the public hearing for. The application is back before you this evening. It's by Hennepin Healthcare. It's for the Hennepin Healthcare Purple Parking Ramp Expansion Project at 600 Park Ave. The site is zoned, excuse me, downtown neighborhood district. It's located in the downtown parking overlay and in the Transit 30 overlay district. The site, again, is located at 600 Park Ave. It is the property here in the middle of the screen. It occupies the entire block bounded by Portland, Sixth Park Ave, and Seventh Street. The east half of the block is occupied by an existing parking garage, which has 1,332 spaces in it. The west half of the site is occupied by a surface parking lot that would be removed for the addition. And the applicant is proposing to expand the parking garage. This would include a nine-story, excuse me, this is the image of the existing site showing what would be demolished, so you can see the existing ramp along Park Ave and then the sites or the surface parking lot along Portland Ave. And then this is a proposed site plan. They're proposing to construct a nine-story parking garage with 1,005 parking spaces. There would be approximately 28,000 square feet of commercial space on the ground level off of Portland Ave. The applicant is proposing to connect the parking garage to the new Thrivent building located across Portland Ave from the site via a skyway. And then this skyway would connect through the building, through the existing purple parking garage, and then into the HC campus itself, HCMC campus, excuse me, itself. And the exterior materials of the parking garage include precast concrete, metal panel, both perforated and solid, and then glass. And then to blend the existing parking garage with the proposed parking garage, they are proposing to use some of those materials and color palette on the existing ramp, so they do seem seamlessly tied together. And the applicant is also proposing to install a solar array on the roof of the proposed addition. They did need to complete a travel demand management plan for the development. Strategies that they picked were transit fare subsidy, real-time transit information. And then there were several that were proposed by the applicant, utilizing Metro Transit Guaranteed Ride Home program. They offer patients with more than four appointments in a row rides. They do have bike parking and bike parking facilities for employees, 24/7 hours security escorts for employees, and then the use of metro mobility. They did work with Public Works and CPED and they did achieve the points necessary for this TDMP, and so we have approved that document. The site was subject to an environmental review back in 2022. The city council found that the EAW was adequate for the project and that no EIS was needed. There are four applications that are needed tonight. One is a conditional use permit for the parking garage itself. The proposed parking garage is in addition to an existing parking ramp located on the site. This is part of a larger campus-wide master plan affecting the entire HCM campus. The project will allow the elimination of a 1,400 space parking garage located at 825 South Eighth Street in order to facilitate the expansion of patient care services without expanding the footprint of the hospital campus. And the project replaces the surface parking lot and will add approximately 28,000 square feet of commercial space along Portland. This is a first-floor plan. What is kind of grayed out on the right is the existing ramp and the functionality of that. And then what is on this screen, blue or purple and green, shows the new ramp addition. What is green is operational areas of the garage, ramps in, ramps out. And then the blue is the commercial space and then the yellow here is your lobby and entrance along Portland Ave. Again, the project is part of the HCMC Campus-wide Master Plan and provides necessary parking for the hospital campus. The establishment of this parking garage facilitates necessary improvement and expansion of the patient care services in other locations on the campus. And the applicant is proposing to cloud portions of the existing garage to seamlessly blend in with the new garage. A traffic study was conducted for this development as part of the environmental assessment worksheet that was done back in 2022. The traffic study concluded that there would be no major disruptions to traffic operations for either the existing or build-out conditions. And it was recommended in that study that the city review signal timing at different intersections around the site. And that is a normal outcome of travel demand management plans and traffic analysis that is done by engineers and reviewed by both Public Works and CPED. So that is not an unusual outcome of a travel demand management plan. With those, or for those reasons, we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit. There are two variances that are needed. The first variance is to reduce the minimum height of the building from 10 stories down to nine stories. The minimum height requirement in the Transit 30 overlay district is 10 stories. This will be nine. Practical difficulties do exist in complying with the ordinance. In this case, there is a helipad located on the roof of the existing parking garage. And given this, the height of the proposed parking garage cannot exceed the height of the existing ramp, as it would disrupt flight path patterns. So regardless of what use was on the site, this would be the tallest building that we would see here, given that helipad on the ramp. And we are recommending approval of that variance. The other variance that is needed, excuse me, is to reduce the minimum width of the drive aisle in the parking garage itself from 18 feet down to 14.2 feet. The zoning code requires parking spaces of the drive aisles to have a certain size depending on the angle of the parking space and if the drive aisle is one or two-way. The parking stalls are proposed to be striped at 60 degrees, which requires an 18-foot wide drive aisle, and the proposed width is 14 feet. Practical difficulties do exist in complying with the ordinance. The parking spaces and drive aisles in the existing ramp do not meet the size requirements of the zoning code and they are replicating those sizes in this addition. Because this is an addition to the garage and one can drive between the two structures without maybe even realizing you're going from old to new, is the applicant is proposing to match the parking space and drive aisle dimensions to make it easier for the customers who park there. So we are recommending approval of that variance as well. The other application that is required is site plan review. And there are some areas of alternative compliance that are needed. One is for building placement. The two corners here have been pulled back more than eight feet from the front property lines or corner side property lines. We are recommending that you grant alternative compliance for that. Pulling the corners back from the adjacent streets provides relief at the street level for pedestrians and also provides for better sightlines around corners for drivers. The principal entrance to the garage is not on Sixth Street, which is the sixth or seventh would have been the front yards. Portland would have been the corner side. However, when this parking ramp was designed, it was designed with the existing ramp in mind, obviously, so cars can flow between. Because the entrances and exits to the existing ramp are along Sixth and Seventh, that is how this worked out best for the new entrances and exits. So given the limited street frontage, if you will, along Sixth and Seventh, the decision was made was to put the principal entrance into that commercial space on Portland Ave. We are recommending that you grant alternative compliance for that. As you can imagine, or maybe not, but as you can imagine, the parking garage doesn't have windows and they do have some blank walls. Because this is meant to be an open-air parking garage, it is not fully enclosed for all of the mechanical and heating reasons that go into those decisions. We are recommending that you grant alternative compliance for those and also for the active functions in the parking garage along that street level. As you can see from the site plan or from the floor plans, they have maximized where they can have active uses on the ground floor and the rest of the spaces have been used for parking ramp for operation purposes in and out. The other area that needs alternative compliance is specifically related to the parking garages or the parking garage itself and our regulations around those. Having to do with the active functions, uses on the upper floors not exceeding 70%. The top level needs to be screened and then the size of the parking garage should not exceed the size of the other uses. Because this is an existing garage with a garage addition, it is not practical to meet these requirements of site plan review, so we are recommending that you grant alternative compliance. So that concludes my presentation and I can stand for any questions.
Thanks, Hillary. Questions for staff? I see Commissioner Meyer.
Do you know the lifespan of the parking garage that is going to be demolished? Like what the approximate duration of it would have been otherwise?
I will let the applicant.
Is the applicant going to present? Okay, I'll wait for them to speak then.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? I don't see any, so thank you, Hillary. I will open the public hearing now for this item. Is the applicant here and would they like to come forward and say anything on this item?
I'm Courtney Bregg from AECOM, leading the design team on this project. Did you want me to answer your question? Okay, let's see here. So I don't know that I'll add additional information in terms of what Hillary presented. She did a very great thorough job. Thank you, Hillary. I think so. Let's see here. So it's going to be duplicate information. We just wanted to go over again the variants. So really, on the new addition, for the height variance, we want to be respectful of the helipad that's on the existing building. So the new building is going to be nine stories, so that we don't interfere with the flight paths of the helipad on the existing HCMC ramp that we are doing the addition to. Then in terms of the drive aisle dimensions, as Hillary mentioned, we are connecting on floors three and above to the existing ramp. And so we want to be able to maintain that consistent travel path for patients, parkers, users of this ramp, so that they notice, or I guess don't notice, that they will be traveling from new to existing ramp. So really keeping that consistent 14/8 drive aisle. So as you can see here on the exterior design, we are taking cues in terms of materiality and color from the newer CCS building on the HCMC campus. We are also taking the materials to the existing parking ramp that exists today to try to create one block design, you could say, with perforated metal panels in two tones, the orangey tone and a gray tone, as well as glazing. And then bringing some sustainability into the project, a solar panel roof, which serves as a cover to surrounding buildings that are taller, so you won't be able to see those cars parking, as well as bringing sustainability and sourced power to the project. And then I did put in the presentation, specific plans, if you have any specific questions, to the 1,005 space parking ramp that I can refer to as needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Meyer, then Commissioner Marwa.
So a few questions about the parking garage that's going to be demolished. So first, do you know what year it was built? And then second, do you know what its expected lifespan would have been were it not to be demolished after this one is approved?
So I don't know the exact year. We weren't the designer or the building of that ramp. But I can say that there are currently sections of that ramp that are closed due to the unusability of that ramp and due to its, I guess, crumbling nature. So really, the goal is to get parkers out of that ramp as soon as possible, because it is at end of life.
Okay. And then I have questions related to the travel demand management discussion, which I'm not sure if they're better suited for the staff or the applicant, or maybe both. But can you talk to me about the reasoning behind some of the applicant-recommended, staff-proposed ones, like the one for bus passes for your patients? Can you talk more about that?
Christopher Kyle, would you be better suited for that?
Kyle Clowitter with Medcraft, owner's representative. So in relation to that question, that is an amenity that they currently offer to their customers and patients. You know, obviously, being a business and a service to the downtown area has challenges. Parking is a challenge that they continue to struggle with and the Hennepin Health has been continually looking for opportunities for alternative modes of transportation in order to alleviate, you know, the parking needs. Does that answer your question or was there something more specific about?
Yeah, so I'm pulling it up here. So it was like if a patient is there four times in a month, they get a transit pass? Am I remembering that one right?
I believe that's correct. I'd have to look back at the policy, but I believe that's the statement. That's correct.
So I'm wondering, so that's what you already have now? That's not something?
Correct, correct, correct. It's not something we're adding. It's something we're doing now in order to alleviate the parking, which is only going to get worse when we take down, you know, 1,400 stall parking ramp, which is at its end of life and replacing it with less parking.
Okay, and it's the same for the transit passes for employees subsidized at 50%?
Correct, that occurs now, yes.
Okay.
That occurs now. The organization is currently working with a consultant on other strategies that they may employ in the future in order to alleviate that parking further.
Okay. And then was there any discussion with staff about increasing those subsidies or making fewer visits per month?
Yeah, so like I said, they're currently working with a consultant.
Working with a consultant, sorry. But as far as part of this condition, that wasn't part of the discussion, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So what's the status with the consultant then?
I'm sorry, what now?
What's going on with the consultant? What's the plan for that?
So currently, Hennepin Health is working with a consultant to look at all of their parking needs and how they might. Thanks, Bill.
Let me speak. So one of the things is that we looked at the TDMP for this process only, but then we also are working with a local parking consultant to develop one for the entire organization. We did hire, a new hire to run that. We worked with some other hospital systems that we're put in touch with and we're going to build that program, because it's going to be extremely important to us as an organization with the reduction of those stalls, to have these consolidated. We need to be able to have employees, find other employees to ride share together. We need to make sure that we have easy transportation for them. But it's going to be a focused initiative for the organization. It takes a little while to roll out to an organization our size. But we do know that we need to have these strategies in place by the time we open this ramp, so that we're successful in being able to park those that need to be there and then also have easy, optional volunteers that are able to find other modes of transportation available for them. And we're taking that initiative to do in-house. So we didn't want to stop just with this process. We want this to be part of our culture going forward. And so those are some of the things that are taking place there now. But we did take some major steps in that direction, just reaching out to some other hospital systems, understand what's available out there and how to kind of build- hospital systems, understand what's available out there, and how to kind of build that program.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marwa?
Hi. My question's for the applicant as well. I remember this project from our committee of the whole conversation, and there still looks like there's no short-term bike parking included in this facility. Can you please explain that?
We did look at options for short-term bike parking, and, you know, you do bring up a very good point. We, you know, I think that's one of those items that is still outstanding. We have looked at the campus as a whole in terms of where short-term bike parking is, and where it's best suited, if it's best suited in this ramp. And really, right now, it's an ongoing discussion. Is it best suited by, like, ED, for instance? Because that is a twenty-four-hour entrance. I know when we were here last time, we talked about it being in a covered space, and that's why it was talked about in the ramp. I think there's a discussion that has to be had about really having, in a ramp, how do you keep bikers safe when cars are continually reversing out of parking spaces? So that's one thing that, you know, we're taking a look at in terms of on-campus, is within this ramp, the best place for non-secured bike parking. An ongoing discussion.
I think there's probably many ramps you could look at for those examples of how they have been able to do that successfully. I think we sat up here and talked about that for a long time at committee of the whole, and you as were talking to, you know, the medical team, and about who was going to be using it. I mean, I'm kind of inclined to say I would not approve this unless that was there, because that was a long part of our discussion last time we were all here.
And we do have the staff bike parking on the ground level, which is the secured bike parking. The one thing that we don't have in the ramp is the patient bike parking, but there is patient bike parking elsewhere on campus.
So it's patient, and it's visitor, and it's many other people that come to a hospital? That's not just patient. It's also, I think, if you, I see thirty-six stalls for all of the medical? Is that the, thirty-six stalls is all you as are including?
In this location.
Okay.
Not as the campus as a whole. There's other, in the TDMP, there's other bike parking identified on campus.
Was it identified that very few people would be biking to this facility from the staff? Because thirty-six seems really low for how many people would probably work there every day. I know you as were surveying, right?
Right.
So how many were identified that would use the parking? Because thirty-six, again, seems very low of a number to include in a facility that probably, you know, thousands of people are working in every day.
Offhand, I don't know the total number.
Thank you, your colleague, Mike.
Yeah, I just want to help out here a little bit. We do have a number of parking, or bike parking that's already available on campus. And what we try to do is if people are coming to the campus, we try to get them to park as close to the entrances as possible, so they don't have to drive around campus or walk around campus so much. And so that's what we kind of have been premising, to get people to those doors and locations. If you drive down Seventh Street, you'll see bike parking on both sides underneath the hospital, so you do have some type of leverage there. So I think your question is, I think it's going to be a little bit difficult to put it here, but I think we can look at other places on campuses to support this.
Okay. And then I also had a question. I remember the design, when we had seen a committee of whole, of the whole, there was kind of corner panels where there was kind of community mural spaces going in. The new design does not have that.
So I don't know, Kyle, if you want to talk about that, but there is...
I thought there was going to be four.
Sorry. There is...
I didn't quite catch the question. What kind of spaces?
The art panels on the exterior.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so what you probably saw in some of your packet was, if you saw some...
I don't think I have it up here.
Exterior images.
It's not on this one.
Okay.
I don't have the shot.
So what you saw was a placeholder for a community art installation. We have a internal art person at Hennepin Health who has been running a selection process for an art consultant to help do, go through that process, to help us engage with our community, and ultimately design what that looks like. So, no, that's fully a component of the exterior of the project that's currently contemplating. It's just a matter of getting identified what it actually looks like, and that's not identified today.
And on this photo, is that on the Seventh side, or the Portland side?
So it would actually be, if you're able to see my cursor, it would be right on this backside here. So it's on the existing park side.
So it would be, yeah.
It's on this.
It'd be kind of the corner of Park and Seventh.
Okay. And you're still only doing one of those?
As of right now, yes.
Correct.
Yep. So currently, in the process of working with the art consultant to really, how do we engage the local art community in that process?
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. As the Hennepin County rep, I should say a few things. But I certainly appreciate the process in which the public art has been, the way in which Hennepin Healthcare has incorporated public art into its spaces and its buildings, and the way that community has been engaged around that. So I'm pleased that it's an ongoing conversation, so that the people who are living and breathing all the things Hennepin Healthcare and the surrounding area can really design that for themselves. One of the things I wanted to add on to Commissioner Meyer's point around the travel management design plan is that there's some work that I am trying to do as well, because there are gaps, I think. And I think the gentleman mentioned that it's an ongoing conversation around the consistency of which parking passes are given, the accessibility in which transit passes are given, and to whom those are given to. So as someone who's very familiar with having to visit Hennepin Healthcare regularly each month, we are absolutely working on a more consistent way to make that happen. So I appreciate Commissioner Meyer bringing that up, and that it's something that you will continue to take into consideration as this moves forward. So thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Any more questions for staff, otherwise our, for the applicant? Otherwise, our public hearing is still open. We need to finish up. Okay. I'm not seeing any. Thank you.
Thank you.
So our public hearing for this item is open. So if there's anyone here who would like to come and speak on this item, you will have two minutes. You can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comments, or name and neighborhood. All right. I'm not seeing any, so I will close the public hearing on this item. Commissioners, is there any discussion, or would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Meyer?
Yeah. So I have a lot of thoughts about this. Some of these variances, I think, are pretty straightforward. Some of them, one of them, I encourage the county to go further than they're going. They're requesting a reduction of the minimum height variance from ten stories to nine. I'd love to see it be smaller than that, to be as small of a parking garage as possible. I really want to take a close look at the conditional use permit for this, though, and the reasoning that we have behind it. So just to read a few of the conditions, or some of the findings that we have to look at. So, you know, for number one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. Number four, adequate measures have been or will be taken to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Number five, the conditional use is consistent with the applicable policies of the comprehensive plan. I mean, when we look at these, you know, one way to look at it is, you know, there's going to be a parking garage of fourteen-hundred spaces that's going to be removed, and this is going to be less than that, so it's a net reduction. If you look at it just that way, then it's meeting, you know, public health targets and comprehensive plan targets around climate action and things like that. But, you know, the existing parking garages, you know, they have a pretty short lifespan. I mean, just looking in on Google, like, how long is the average lifespan of a parking garage? You know, it's about twenty to fifty years. It's not very long. And, you know, we already, we heard the applicant say that this one is, the existing one is crumbling, so it might be the case that they wouldn't be able to keep it for much longer. And then we would have, you know, just in the status quo, if there was no new parking garage, then there might be a significant reduction in traffic and pollution in the area. For the, you know, item that's next on the agenda, there's going to be a lot of discussion about the pollution generated from, I think, like, four hundred vehicles or something like that. I mean, this is, you know, more than twice as much as that. So it's something important to be considering. So, you know, I really wanted, you know, to closely look at the travel demand management that's being proposed for this, because if you look at it in that way, that this other parking garage, you know, has a limited lifespan, it's probably going to go away anyway, then we are allowing a new parking garage to be built that'll be there for a couple of generations, and, you know, really entrench more driving there. So I'd really like to see the county really do whatever it can to mitigate that now. And it sounds like they're having this study to consider. I mean, it seems like that should have come first, to figure out, like, how big this parking garage needed to be. Maybe it could have been smaller. But one thing I want to propose is that, in case the county is able to figure out a way to redirect their customers, their patients in different ways, that we, you know, authorize making it, like, I don't know, seven stories instead of the nine that they requested. So that, I mean, not requiring them to do that, but giving them the space that they wouldn't have to come back here if it was smaller. And then I also wanted to have some discussion about possibly, you know, adding conditions around the travel demand management, like, you know, right now, the status quo is they give the passes to customers if that customer is going to be there four times in a month, consistently, month after month. You know, for the meetings that we have here, you know, they give me two transit passes for each meeting here, right? And that helps a lot to, you know, to incentivize people. So, you know, maybe the county could copy what the city is doing and give transit passes to all their customers who don't drive there. And then maybe if you did that, then you could get by with a much smaller parking garage, which might save you a lot of money as well, but that part is beyond our scope. Anyway, those are the things that I really wanted to scrutinize. I'd like to hear what other commissioners have about those ideas, about first, reducing the height requirement, like, giving a bigger variance than what the applicant asked for. And then second, I'd like to request comment about possibly adding conditions related to the travel demand management plan.
Commissioner Conley?
Yep. So just so I'm clear, what is the specific purpose to reduce from nine to seven? Because we know that there's a helipad there, and we know that the helipad needs to land at a trauma-one hospital. So bringing it down to seven isn't a requirement, but are you saying to add it as a recommendation? Meaning that Hennepin Healthcare doesn't necessarily have to bring it down to seven? They can keep it at nine to be consistent?
They could.
But seven is an option.
Thank you, Commissioner Conley. My thought is to not, I'm not, you know, requiring anything, but I think the helicopter argument would justify, you know, possibly, you know, a shorter building to give them more clearance. So it would be justified under the existing variance logic, but would also just give the county more room to build a smaller one if they chose to do that after the study is completed. Does that answer the question?
Are you good, Commissioner Conley? Okay. Go ahead, Hillary.
I just want to point out that if you were to choose to reduce the height of the parking garage further, you would have to address the findings. And staff hasn't evaluated the impacts of having a seven-story versus a nine-story. We know that nine can go there. It's really, we really want ten, we want thirty, but we have a limitation with the helipad. We have a practical difficulty here. So going less would require a new variance. And I have talked about this with the applicants, like, what happens if we want to come in with six in the future, just in case? Then you have to come back to planning commission, because the variance is to nine. So we haven't evaluated a variance to less, so we cannot just approve a new variance that has not been evaluated by staff. So that would, it would have to, they'd have to come back. And that's not what they're requesting. They're requesting down to nine.
Hillary, I have a question. What, or Commissioner Meyer was talking about conditions around the TDMP. I guess I'm just trying to understand what that would look like, as far as on which application this would be? Would it be like a condition on site plan review, or?
It's an administrative application. We do condition that they meet the points or the strategy points as part of site plan review. So I think if you wanted to add conditions, you could add them there. Now, I will caution about adding conditions related to administrative applications, as we are getting into the practice of not conditioning administrative applications, because if they change something, which you're going to see at the next planning commission meeting on a different project, they have to come back. And so we, as staff, have been talking about how to address admin height, admin FAR, admin TDMP is like how we do that, so we're not putting conditions and overboarding staff, the applicants, all of you, the time of the public, everything. Because once we've put a condition there and it gets adopted, if they want to undo it, we have to come back. And so I would just caution that we don't overcondition on things that may not be attainable without further information.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I will chime in, and I'll say, you know, I think that this is a regional facility, and I think that, as a hospital, I feel like it's important to have, as a regional hospital, to have a certainly adequate amount of parking. I obviously do agree with commissioners that we need to have as many amenities available for multimodal transportation, not just for staff, but for visitors and patients as well. So I'm not sure where that lands, if it's a condition on site plan review or not. Yeah. Commissioner Alper?
Thank you. Thank you. In response to the questions that you posed, Commissioner Meyer, first of all, I think I would be interested, just given that a lot is in process, it sounds like, knowing if we could possibly condition having the applicant coming back to give a report on the ultimate strategies in the future. I believe it might be part of the TDM plan ordinance, that there's a report required, or there's some checking in on the strategies after a certain period of time. I don't know if it comes back to the planning commission. Does not. Okay. Well, anyway, I would be interested in a follow-up, because this is a major medical institution that serves, has a huge public service and huge public good, and I think does a lot for our community and beyond a level-one trauma facility. I mean, I'm so glad that we have Hennepin Healthcare here in downtown. So I think a lot of us take a great deal of interest in the future of this healthcare institution. So I personally would like to see what, you know, kind of an ongoing discussion as part of this, and as a taxpayer in Hennepin County. So that would be one thing I've thought of.
All right. Commissioner Meyer, is your thing up, or?
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Well, maybe let's met Commissioner Marwa, we'll choose out.
I also think, you know, understanding that we can, with the nine, is that they can build to it based on the research that they're kind of completing makes sense to me with the variance because of the helipad. I think my problem is still just that there is no short-term bike parking. I think that encourages the fact that visitors won't be able to really have secure parking if they went there. As someone who uses that hospital system often, I like to bike there. I live very close by, too, but it's a bikeable distance, it's not a walkable distance. And I think by not including that, you're kind of doing a disservice to the whole, to the vicinity of folks that would want to use short-term bike parking. So I would, as part of the condition for site plan review, to put in a condition as part of their TDMP to include short-term bike parking to that facility. For approval.
Oh, okay. Let's go Baxley and Meyer.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. You know, the, to the question of size, Commissioner Meyer, I think, you know, potentially they could go higher. They could put the helipad on the new side and have all the clearance, and we can go up to nine or ten stories. I'm sure that's possible. For me, I think, I believe they've studied... sure that's possible. For me, I think, I believe they've studied this, and I think keeping it consistent in size, keeping the existing helipad is a nice compromise for the requirements of the facility now into the future. I believe they've studied this. They talked about this last time they were here. So an arbitrary reduction, I would look at other ways to encourage, like Commissioner Marwa, for other modes of transportation. But to me, both aesthetically and performance wise, the proposal as presented seems appropriate. So I just want to say that.
Commissioner Meyer?
So I'm wondering if the applicant would be receptive to add a condition to modify the TDMP. So right now, you know, it's a, if a patient's there four times a month, would the applicant be receptive if there is a condition to make that for patients to come twice a month?
Hillary, yeah.
Again, travel demand management plans are done and approved administratively between Public Works and CPAD. And so we're not debating the strategies that have been selected. I think there can be guidance given to the applicant about looking into other things. But we're talking about whole systems, policies and procedures and benefit packages to employees. And so I don't think the consulting team sitting here can give permission for the whole HR of Hennepin Healthcare to change those. And again, these are done administratively. So we're coming to you with a complete application, meaning they have completed and they've met the points for the TDMP. So, you know, changing the strategies now would mean that Public Works and the applicant and I go back and have to redo things. But we've got a complete application and we have a clock running. And so, you know, this is the flex, this is the assurances that we built in with 2040, right, as to, you know, these are the requirements for height, for FAR, and then travel demand was part of that whole 21 ordinance change. You know, we, we wanted assurances for the public and for the applicants to know what they can and can't do. And so some of these things, you have to trust staff and the, and the professional design teams that are selected by the applicants, that we've worked things out, we've negotiated, we've discussed, you know, we've debated. We've come full circle and we're, you know, we have an approved plan. So, you know.
Good. Okay. Conley and then Ford.
Thank you. So it sounds to me, going back to the commissioner's point about the bicycle parking within this specific ramp, I guess I would want to be clear about why this specific space, if, and maybe we can get more clarification on where there is bike parking, I heard, on one side of the street, on the other side of the street, in and around the area. There's also mass, there's maybe, I don't, I'm not going to put a number on how many transit lines go through, but if you live close and want to bike there, where are, is there the secured parking now, right? And I guess you're already evaluating secured bike parking, just maybe not in the specific building. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on why this building specifically and why not. Because that was the question for you, I believe.
Is for the applicant, right?
Yes.
To respond?
Oh, yeah. Just basically seeking clarity on why we would need to change the complete application for secured parking specifically in this building. Is it elsewhere? Are you planning it elsewhere? Is the consultant going to look at the overall secured parking situation on campus to be able to resolve this?
Yeah. So we usually don't just identify without data and understanding where people want the parking that's best for them to get where they're going. We do realize that this parking garage is not central to the campus, right? It's way on one side. So you have to travel about five blocks if you park your bike there, or go through the tunnels and things where you want to go. So as we go through this process, we're going to listen, right? We're going to understand. We're going to say, where is it appropriate to do it? We have a large campus, and we can look at that entire campus, see how do we resolve this. But it's one of those things too, is we also know that we have issues with our existing park, our bike parking, right? Where we have security issues that are there. People are jumping fences and things like that. And so we just completed that study to say, how do we help that? Because it's not just the community, it's also the people that are there, right? It's the people, do they feel safe parking their bike there? Is it where it's convenient for them to get there? And so that all needs to take place to identify it. I don't know if I would assign this ramp as that location. I would look at it and say, how do we do something better for, on campus for everyone by listening? That's probably my best answer.
Commissioner Ford and then?
Madam President, just to move things along here, I'm going to move, we've closed the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Right. I'm going to move adoption of the plat, the staff report and items A, the conditional use permit, B and C, the two variances, and D, the site plan review, and put it before us so that if, if there want to be some actual amendments made, we can then discuss those. But, thank you.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Commissioner Meyer?
You know, I didn't hear much support for my conditions, so I won't propose them. I do want to say though, like, I don't feel there's been much debate about these particular ones, because these were, like, the TDM strategies that were approved, were approved by the, by the staff, and they weren't part of any official policy. So it's, and that's why, one of the reasons why I was really scrutinizing this in the first place is because this is the, as far as I know, the first time that some of these alternative ways of meeting the TDM requirements are being proposed. I do think, you know, it is within our domain to add conditions that are relevant to the condition criteria. So I think we do have that authority if we wanted to expand those conditions. But having, having not heard support for adding those, I won't today. But I am encouraged that the county is doing this study, and would just really, you know, push the county to do as much as possible to try and make this parking garage used as little as possible. Thank you.
I'm wondering what the commission thinks of a friendly amendment to add a condition number seven to item D, site plan review. I was thinking about maybe adding 10 bicycle racks on the sidewalk near the parking garage. I know it's not secure bike parking, but maybe that would ease some concerns.
Madam Chair, my, my quick reaction is I don't know what the right number is, and I trust the hospital to do what, what makes the most sense, whether it's 10 or 12 or, you know, or where they should be, I don't know. So.
Sure. All right.
Right now, there's no short term parking, Commissioner Ford, included. There's zero short term parking stalls included or bike racks.
Well.
In that location, Mike.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt staff recommendation. Is there any other discussion? Otherwise, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll. All right. Seeing none, please call the roll. And just so I'm clear, Chair, that also includes the amendment?
It does not.
It does not. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. With that, Commissioner Alper?
Aye.
Baxley?
Aye.
Campbell?
Abstain.
Conley?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Kosky?
Aye.
Marwa?
Does this include Commissioner Olson's amendment that she just stated?
No.
No. We, are we voting on that separate?
We didn't. No.
No. Okay. Abstain.
Chair Olson?
Aye.
So, oh, Meyer, I'm so sorry. Commissioner Meyer?
No.
No. Okay. Thank you. So with that, there's six ayes, one nays and two abstentions.
All right. That motion passes, and that completes that item. We will move on to our last public hearing item this evening, which is item number 12. And, let's see, Hiawatha Maintenance Facility Roof Depot, and staff is Peter Crandall.
Chair Olson.
Oh, Commissioner Meyer?
Yep. I just wanted to say at the start of the meeting, because I'll be leaving, but wanted to announce that I'll be recusing myself from this vote.
Thank you.
After having a discussion with the lawyer, the unique circumstances with my employment for Senator Morfate, you know, they recommended that I recuse, so.
Great. Thank you for letting us know. All right.
Good evening, Commissioners. Peter Crandall, Senior City Planner with CPAD Land Use. The project before you is located at 1901 26th Street East, 1860 28th Street East, and 2717 Longfellow Avenue. This is in the East Phillips neighborhood of South Minneapolis. The project site is composed of three existing parcels, all zoned for industrial uses under the current plan, including I-1 and I-2 zoning with the built form corridor six overlay district. This is a zoning map showing those existing parcels, and then a survey showing on the south parcel, an existing one story industrial building that's currently vacant, the former Roof Depot building. And then on the north parcel is an existing city, street and equipment maintenance facility, otherwise known as the Hiawatha Maintenance Facility. The applicant is here to propose to demolish the existing one story industrial building on the southern parcel and to construct an expansion to the existing street and equipment maintenance facility on the north parcel for a total of approximately 435,000 gross square footage of that new facility. The project itself, the site plan is, is before you here with this for your, the project includes several new structures in addition to renovation and expansion of some of the existing structures on site. So Building A is the existing facility maintenance offices on the north end of the site. The applicant's proposing an expansion, addition and renovation of that structure. There's a new tempered storage building on the west side of the site, a new three story parking garage for fleet and staff vehicles on the east side of the site adjacent to Hiawatha, a new tempered storage and vehicle maintenance building in the center portion of the site, and then a new water department offices facility on the southern end of the site adjacent to 28th Street East. Site access will be primarily from 26th Street East and 28th Street East on the north and south end of the site with a secondary vehicle access point that is existing on 27th Street East, coming off of Longfellow Avenue there to the west. The applicant is also proposing to retain an outlot on the southwest portion of the site there with frontage on Longfellow Avenue and 28th Street East for future development. And then these are some exonometric views of the site that I think the applicant is going to address a little bit more in detail to talk about the design. But this shows you some of those existing and future planned facilities with a little bit more dimensionality. And then some renderings of the existing and proposed facility and the exterior material expression. There's a combination of brick, weathered metal panel and precast concrete and burnished block for proposed exterior materials. For that proposed parking garage along Hiawatha, the applicant is proposing a perforated anodized metal panel with a architectural pattern to provide visual interest to that portion of the project. And then there is a proposed public facing bike equipment maintenance facility at the corner of East 28th Street adjacent to the Midtown Greenway. And then this kind of shows you the applicant's proposed mitigation strategies for any blank wall conditions along that greenway facing elevation of the water department offices structure. And then this is a view of that structure from East 28th Street, showing that principal entrance to the facility and the office facility. I did include a detail of the proposed parking counts to show the breakdown of the proposed fleet and staff vehicle counts. And now that it's up here, I can't read that, but. So it's a total of 888 parking spaces with 406 spaces reserved for fleet vehicles and 304 reserved for personal vehicles, as well as a number of then guest parking and then equipment and maintenance parking spaces in the various structures on site. So the applications required are rezoning of that portion of the site that is currently zoned for I-1 to I-2 to make the entire site consistent. I will point out that the entire site will be rezoned as a part of the land use and rezoning study to a production mixed use zoning district that would allow this use as a conditional use in the same way that the existing zoning on the site does today. So that doesn't change the fundamental zoning characteristics of the site with regard to this use. And then two conditional use permits, one for an expansion to that existing street and equipment maintenance facility, and then one for the new proposed parking facility on the site. There is a variance to reduce the minimum interior side yard along the east property line adjacent to the Midtown Greenway, and that is primarily due to the fact that the greenway itself is zoned for residential zoning, which I can't necessarily explain why, but the, that would require a reflective yard along that, that side yard. So the applicant's requesting a reduction of that from five feet to zero. The site plan review for the expansion of the existing facility, and then a preliminary and final plat to combine the existing zoning lots into the one proposed lot for the use and then that additional outlot. I will pause there, and I can take any questions.
Thanks, Peter. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Alper?
Yeah, just a quick question. That northeast corner, could, could you describe that, or will the applicant, who's also the city, be describing that corner where it says patio? And?
Sure. I can let the applicant maybe address that a little bit more, but my understanding is that's a staff amenity space primarily, but.
All right. I'm not seeing any other questions yet, so I'll open the public hearing. And if you, the applicant wants to come forward and say anything and maybe address Commissioner Alper's question, you can do so now. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Bacchus, Project Manager, and Terry, part of our design team. To that question, hopefully you're highlighting, I'm highlighting the patio and there's bike storage area, and that, that is for staff.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I don't see any. Thank you. Unless you wanted to present anything else.
Peter went through most everything, I think, the views that we Peter went through most everything, I think, the views that we wanted to talk about.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, we will continue with the public hearing. As a kind of reminder, we'll be limiting comments to two minutes a person, and you'll know how much time you have left by the timer right there. And, I just want to say, we have applications before us, and that's what we are allowed to act on, so if you could try to keep your comments related to the applications that the planning commission has the ability to act on, we would appreciate that. So I have some of you signed up here, and I'm going to call through all of these names, and you can come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and then proceed with your comments. So up first, we have Kent Maury. Is Kent Maury here? No? Okay, maybe we'll come back. I think it's maybe Shayna Thompson? Shay Thompson?
Madam Chair, just as a comment, I know there are overflow people, so I might need to check in the room next door.
Okay. Well, we'll come back to those people, and they'll still have a chance. Hardy Coleman?
I am Hardy Coleman, and I live at 2619 Cedar, right in the heart of it. If you sit in our living room, and we're just having a conversation 10, 12, 15 times a day, you gotta shut up and wait for the house to stop rumbling. It's like Godzilla's walking through your neighborhood all the time. It's kind of disrupting, I don't think it's good for the house, and it's not good for the neighborhood. And this is with light zoning, light industrial zoning, and the city wants to increase it to heavy industrial? That's... You know, we are citizens of the city, me and my neighbors. We've got kids on either side of us, we've got kids up and down the street. The polluted air is so thick you can cut it with a dull butter knife already, that's enough. And I know Jacob Prey is up for an award for having a child-friendly city. I'm sorry, that's a joke, and it ain't funny. You know, I care about my neighbors. I care about my house, I care about my neighborhood, and the kids especially. And I don't think, I think we need something good for the neighborhood, instead of just more noise and more monsters up and down the street. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Timothy Hart? Is Timothy here?
Hello?
Hi.
My name's Timothy Hart, I live in the Hiawatha neighborhood, and I'm asking Commissioners to not recommend this zoning and conditional use for this space. My, just first thing, it sounded like there is a land, the zoning code is getting updated in a way that this will become less relevant, once the city council votes on that, so it feels like this is less of a pressing concern, and could be postponed to see what the city council does on that. But if it is voted on tonight, I would say to vote against it, particularly considering the alternative that the community has proposed, that would be a fantastic green investment, and a real tangible benefit to the residents and to their future. I feel like that the use of this site both is inconsistent with the goals of disparity reduction, as well as does not maintain the goals of the South Side Green Zone in addressing the environmental impacts of the area, particularly considering the letter from healthcare professionals that the Sewer and Vaccine Equity Project recently put out, speaking to the potential impacts of this site. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kip Hedges?
Kip Hedges, 4114 40th Avenue South, Longfellow neighborhood. To me, the best argument against this, or at least the strongest argument for postponing, is, as Tim Hart mentioned, the city council is likely to act on this fairly quickly. I'm sure all of you are aware, on one level or another, that this is one of the political hot potatoes of the city right now, that there's tremendous tumult over the issue of the urban farm, the water yard, et cetera, and there's a lot of balls in the air. The state legislature potentially is going to vote for money to allow the East Phillips urban farm people to purchase the site, and it would behoove all of you, I believe, in the interest of responsible leadership, to at least delay your decision on this until some of those balls have come to the ground or been caught. To me, that's the most pressing issue right here, is to give us a little more time, you know, just give us a little more time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Janet Court?
My name is Janet Court, I live at 1216 Powderhorn Terrace, that's in Ward 9. I, as an elderly retired person, I volunteer on several of the work groups that the city has had. I've worked on Vision Zero. I also worked on two of the work groups for the Minneapolis Energy and Equity Plan. The goals of the city have been to reduce traffic deaths. This area, actually, the very tiny area between 24th and 28th Street, is one of the very, very worst portions of the city. The city's goals are to reduce traffic in that area, not to increase it. Again, also, the city's plan for energy and equity is to create safety, safe and healthy places for people to live in all neighborhoods in the city. This applies to East Phillips, as well as every other section of the city. This is also a very bad time to do this, because there's a possibility of other things being done with that land, and the particular zoning change could really restrict some of the uses that, if Etnie acquired the property, that they would want to use it for. And lastly, I want to call again the health letter and the need for reduction of traffic in that area, as far as asthma. We're in the process of actually qualifying how each truck transfers to how many asthma cases. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, Patricia Enger?
Hello, Patricia Enger. I live at 2619 Cedar Avenue. I used to be a real estate agent. I understand why the city wants to have this place, because this is the best location to get from anywhere. I lived in downtown Minneapolis, I couldn't go anywhere. I live at 26 Cedar, I can get anywhere in the city. This is a wonderful place to live, except it's a beat-up part of the city. This is going to be tough for me not to, the things that have gone on in our neighborhood. The last thing we need is more dehumanizing... I guess, I pick up garbage in the neighborhood, and I've gone over to that site along Longfellow, and picked up for, I guess, what the city should... They are the stewards at this time, I believe, of that property. They don't take good care of it. Why should I believe, if they bring a bunch of trucks in there, they're going to take better care of it? I, we're a neighborhood, we've got kids all around us, and I don't know if I was dreaming, but I believe I went to a meeting with people from the state. They're going to be fixing up our section of Cedar, and they asked us for our input on what can we do, what would we'd like to see? Well, one of the things certainly was not more traffic from big trucks. I'm, I'm just, this is, this is tough, but if you could just, other things are going on, if you could just hold off on this tonight, it would be, it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Christiansen?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Emily, and I am a Ward 5 resident. I attended the April 24th meeting remotely, and I'm excited about the possibility of there being grocery stores in my neighborhood. Thank you for pushing the city's plan at that meeting, so that our neighborhoods are more livable. During your April 24th meeting, you amended the updated zoning code presented by the city to ensure that it meets the goals of the 2040 plan. You heard testimony from 19 Minneapolis residents, and over 500 pages of testimony from residents and councils were taken into consideration. The meeting went two hours over, with lots of important decisions being made about the livability of future Minneapolis neighborhoods. At the end of the meeting, Commissioners unanimously approved a directive that acknowledged that there is more work to be done in developing a system to evaluate the environmental justice impacts that future expansion of moderate and high-impact production and processing sites would bring. Considering that the rezoning plan goes to the city council next, and that the Roof Depot site in East Phillips will be rezoned in June, when the city council adopts this new zoning code, it doesn't make any sense to me that this is on your agenda today. I'm asking that the Commissioners postpone Item 12 on their agenda to be voted on on a later date. This is, this would be after the city council has a chance to vote on this. If the Commissioners do vote today, I'm asking that they keep our comments, the 19 community members' comments, the 500-plus pages of testimony in mind, and to vote no on this rezoning and conditional use permit request.
Thank you. Brian Halbach?
Yeah, one more now. Quick point of order first, can I actually ask questions, or just making a comment?
It's not a question and answer.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Okay, I wasn't sure, but yeah, I didn't want that to count into my... Okay. But yeah, I'm Brian Halbach. I live on Longfellow and 28th, so directly across from the Roof Depot. When I look outside, I see the Roof Depot every day, and I got a new job where I work from home, so I'm going to be there 24/7, 365. So, yeah, the, everything that'll be going on will be affecting me non-stop. Same with my partner, who also got a new work-from-home job, and, but really, we're kind of the lucky ones, because although we're going to be working from home, the reason we're home is because we have these nice jobs, but the other people that are home all the time are either the elderly, the children, or sick, and so they're the ones that will be affected by this even more. The other thing that I wanted to bring about, just as my experience as a resident, is that there's a bad smell in the neighborhood from the existing businesses there, and any existing projects, what they either may dig up from the earth, or additional diesel trucks, will have a compounding effect on that. The odor is actually something that is addressed in the zoning laws, the I-2 and I-1. Additionally, when I got the letter about this today, it said that they wanted to rezone from I-3 light to I-2 medium. An action that this group can take is, I don't think that's necessary, I think that they can continue to get conditional permits for what they need, that the I-3 zone is actually too permissive and will allow too much. In fact, the wording even says that it'll allow adverse effects to the neighborhood, and that the existing businesses that are there are already doing I-3 zone activities, such as asphalt, rock, and other things in the I-3 zone. So I think by making all of that I-2, it's too much, it'll be too broad. Conditional permits are a better option, so not going forward with this at this time, and just going forward at it later when that's been addressed.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go back to the two names, I, just to make sure no one's here. Is there Kent Maury? No? Okay. And Shay or Shanae Thompson? All right. It's appropriate if people didn't sign up to speak, though, okay. So if there's anyone who wants to speak who hasn't spoken yet, you can come up to the podium now, and actually, it might be best to just form a line if there's a few of you, and state your name and neighborhood for the record, and go ahead with your comments. Thank you.
Sharon Thompson, 4745 Oakland Avenue in Minneapolis. I support the East Phillips Urban Farm Plan being built in the whole area of the Roof Depot site. There are plenty of people who are supporting and speaking up for the East Phillips Urban Farm Plan. The goal in East Phillips is to reduce the impacts of air pollution, water contamination, soil degradation, and the serious health problems that plague the neighborhood. The Hiawatha expansion will just continue the legacy which destroys land, air, and water in the area. The Roof Depot building would be a starting place for cooperative activity and people working together for the goals set in the Minneapolis 2040 Plan. In addition, Minneapolis has set the neighborhood as part of the South Side Green Zone. The alternative site where the Water Works is currently located can be rebuilt and updated with a lot less taxpayer money. My request is that postponement for the Item 12, and deny the recommendations that are not within the area of the city ordinance.
Thank you.
525.305.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Please come sign in, also.
If you, who, I don't remember your name, who just spoke? If you could sign in, please? Okay. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this item? Yeah, we'll wait.
Hi, my name's Shimra Shai. I don't live in the East Phillips, but I've been involved with this group that's advocating for East Phillips Neighborhood Institute. I actually live in Marcy Homes, around where the Dinky Town is, the border between the two, but I don't really have anything else to add much to all the other points, if I made a degree with everything that's been said about, you know, the environmental impact and stuff, but I would just say that one thing that seems to come to mind is that it seems like the zoning change just seems to me like maybe the developers are trying to like nibble away at the site or something, because of, and, and you know, I'm not sure if that, that's, I don't know if that's what is going on, but it's something that seems like to me, and, you know, even before they get the thing in whole, and, you know, so I think that, you know, that because of that, that I think I tend to agree with what everybody else says, that it should be, you know, the decision on this should be postponed and made until, you know, later, once, you know, the thing with the funding, you know, the state government funding has been... funding has been, you know, put, put through or, you know, voted on. So that's all I want to say, I guess.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Once I close the public hearing, you won't have an opportunity to do that. All right. I'm not seeing anyone, so I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion? Go ahead. Or you could make a motion, yep.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move to postpone this item to the final meeting of the CPC in June, on June 26.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I know we have to be careful about those, the dates, and I'm wondering, I think I saw January, a June 13th date somewhere in here. Am I wrong? Can we ask staff what the timing is?
Yes, that's correct. So we are required to act on any formal land use request within 60 days. That 60-day timeline can be extended an additional 60 days. So June 13th is the 60-day window, so we would be able to go 60 days beyond that without needing the applicant to grant the city some kind of special permission to extend the timeline.
And then after that timeline runs out, then if no action is taken, the project or the applications are automatically approved?
Correct, unless the applicant voluntarily extends the timeline.
Got it. Okay.
I personally would prefer to move to deny one of the conditional use permits, and then if that fails, maybe then consider Commissioner Conley's motion, if that might be possible, Chair Olson.
Well, so we have a motion on the table. Or, yeah, or. And it hasn't been seconded yet. Okay.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Alper, would you like to talk about what your?
Yes, and I'm happy to describe what I'm thinking first and then introduce the motion, if that works well for people. So let me start just by saying that conditional use permits are, are uses that could have potential impacts, so they come before us to be evaluated further. So it's totally within our purview to evaluate a conditional use permit, I believe, unless staff tells us otherwise, to evaluate it and potentially deny it. And so that is really what I would like to put before us tonight. Parking garages, they are a conditional use in all zoning districts, and we have an application before us for one of them. I, the first finding by staff that the establishment and operation of, I believe that the establishment and operation of the conditional use, this parking garage, will be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. The High Injury Network of Streets, 2022 High Injury Network includes a high concentration of fatal crashes and serious injuries on all the major streets that bound this site. That includes Hiawatha, 28th, 26th, and Cedar. The Vision Zero website for the city states Native American residents are disproportionately impacted by traffic deaths. This is home to little earth. And this is directly from the cities, the applicant and the reviewer of this, this application before us, might I add. This is directly from the city's safety data website. Also, crashes are concentrated in neighborhoods with people of color and people of lower incomes, again, from the city's safety webpage. And most sadly, I want to share a story with you from just 12 days ago, that a person walking through the intersection of Cedar and 28th was struck and killed by a large vehicle going west on 28th Street and turning left onto Cedar. This was a person walking. His name, and I want to share this with you today, his name was Josue Goches Perez. He was 27 years old, and he left behind three kids and a wife in Mexico. This, this is the type of harm that is being done, okay? And I want to be clear, this is exactly the same routes that fleet vehicles will take from this facility, exiting on 28th and turning onto one of our High Injury Network streets, onto 28th. There's a GoFundMe campaign out there to help his burial and body being flown back to Mexico. And this happened on April 26th, 2023, 12 days ago. So really, I guess the motion, and I want to say today, was groundbreaking for the B-line. This is, this project is not consistent with our comprehensive plan, and I'm, so those were the first finding, and then related to the comprehensive plan, it is not consistent with Policy 16, Environmental Impacts of Transportation, which was cited in the staff report, but I do not believe that it meets, it's page 139 of the Comprehensive Plan, Point B, Increase Availability and Attractiveness of Public Transportation in Non-Moderized Modes and Continue to Disincentivize Driving and Driving Alone. As far as I can tell, they're building this garage will do exactly the opposite. Also, Policy 26, Vision Zero, like I said, eliminate fatalities and severe injuries. This will increase, this will increase fatalities and severe crashes in our city. And then last but not least, which I've managed to lose, Policy 67, 61, Environmental Justice and Green Zones, and I want to read, read to you from that and say, it's because these three taken together that I believe that we should deny the conditional use permit before us today. It's Environmental Justice and Green Zones, Establish Environmental Justice, Frameworks for Policy Resources and Regulation. And I received the EAW at 5:30, or at 4:30, excuse me, today, and I read through the pages that we received as fast as I could, and it stated that, that the environmental impacts of transportation are supposed to be taken as an average across the city. But I would argue that Policy 61, that this disproportionately burdens this neighborhood with this parking facility and concentrating the fleet vehicles at this site. Fair treatment from page 199 of the Comprehensive Plan means that no group of people should bear a disproportionate share of the negative environmental consequences resulting from industrial, governmental, and commercial operations, or the execution of federal, state, local, and tribal programs and policies. The concept of fair treatment includes the equitable distribution of environmental resources and burden, and this facility does exactly the opposite if we are to grant this conditional use permit. So with that, I would like to, I guess, make a motion, Chair Olson, am I, is that my right?
So I would like to make a motion to deny the Point C, the conditional use permit for the parking facility.
Second. All right. So we have a motion and a second, and we will discuss. Hillary, what type of findings would be necessary for us to make to deny conditional use permit, Item C?
I think Alper had started off with what sounded like findings to me, so if you could restate those, under which finding are you referencing? And then you had also listed several policy numbers, which we can listen in the tape for, the recording for, but if you could cite the policy numbers again, it would be...
Yep, I'm happy to restate those just a minute. That it will, you want the policy numbers first? Those are Policy 16 Point B, Policy 26 on Vision Zero, and Policy 61, Environmental Justice and Green Zones. And it's the combination of those three that, that is why I believe this, I'm making this motion. And did you need the first, the first finding, that it would be the establishment and operation of the conditional use will be detrimental or endanger your public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare because of all those things that I mentioned, that the high-network streets, the disproportionate impact from traffic deaths by Native American residents, that where, you know, crashes are concentrated in neighborhood with people of color, lower incomes. This is all from the city's website.
Okay, we are going to have to catch this, though, in a finding, in a, in a finding for the, for the actions.
Right.
Right.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Alper, when you started.
Yes.
Your motion, the first time, though, you had some sentences that sounded like a finding.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to be difficult, I just.
No, no, I understand, I understand, and.
You only have to, you have to.
The, I only have to do one, right? I mean, the establishment of a new parking facility in this location will be detrimental and endanger the public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare. This proposed parking facility is bounded by 2022 high-network streets, including Hiawatha, Cedar, 28th, and 26th, and the largest urban population of Native American residents in Minneapolis, who are disproportionately, got two devices going here, impacted by traffic deaths, and this, this location is located in a green zone, which, okay, yeah.
I think we can.
Okay.
Use that, and then we have the policies that you cited, so we can use those in the findings. This is just one condition, one of the applications before you tonight, so.
Yes, that is the one I wish to specifically make a motion on tonight, by me.
If the, okay, I'm just going to state that if we are going to continue some, we should continue all. We, if we're going to deny, we need to act on all of the applications or we continue all of the applications. We can't piecemeal them because they're all running on a clock together, and it gets too complicated and we don't, we, you know, we concurrently review everything, so we can't pull things apart and approve some tonight and continue other things. So collectively, the Commissioners should decide which path you're going down. If you're going to continue, then we need to continue all of them. If you're going to move down the path to deny, then we need to take all of those actions tonight.
Okay.
I assume we can take them one at a time, right?
Why couldn't?
Sure. Hillary, would a, would a denial of one of the conditional use permits be a reason for denial to the other permits?
No.
No.
Because the rezoning has different findings, the variance has different findings in the site plan review.
Okay. As the motion maker, may I speak to it? I would very much like us to consider them one by one and, I mean, I, this is the one I feel, or we can do it all together, whatever, I don't know.
All right. Commissioner Conley and Marwa's had hers up for a while, too.
Just wanted to get clarification on why we couldn't move the motion on 12C and then, like, where's the concrete that the Planning Commission cannot do these items separately?
I apologize. I took one of Commissioner Alper's comments, says, "Tonight I want to deny this one and then I'll think about the others," but, so maybe I misheard or misunderstood. You can do them separately tonight, yes, but it's either you do all of them or you continue all of them. That's all. That's, that's what I was meaning.
We could approve some conditions and deny, or some items and deny other items, is, yeah.
We can't deny and postpone. We either have to approve or deny or postpone.
Yep.
All right. Commissioner Marwa.
Yes, hi. My question's for staff. Can you just clarify a little bit about the timeline? We heard with our, the rezoning study that we approved going to council on May 16th, right, that that would change what's in site plan review, so then if we were to postpone or delay this decision, I guess I'm just trying to understand timeline-wise, what, what could possibly change on the 16th, based on what we're seeing?
Sure. So the citywide land use and rezoning study is expected to take effect on July 1st, so that would be the effective date that the new zoning would be in place. The new zoning on the site is a production mixed-use district, which allows a street and equipment maintenance facility as a conditional use in the same way that the existing zoning on the site does today. So that substantive zoning change doesn't really change the realities of the site in terms of what is allowed and not allowed by zoning. The timing issue, I think, that we would have is that we're rezoning to a district, the applicant is requesting to rezone to a district under the current zoning, the current zoning code. We're not accepting applications after this meeting essentially for that code because of the way that the timing works out with the zoning change, and so we would have to wait essentially to entitle the project potentially until that effective date in July, because we'd have to wait for the new zoning to be in place, because there isn't time for this rezoning application to move through the process of approval by City Council, signature, et cetera. So that's the only timing issue.
So would that mean that we would not be able to delay to that June 26th meeting that Commissioner Conley just mentioned?
Either that or we would have to look at other options, like the applicant would have to rezone to the split zoning overlay district to allow to have multiple zoning districts on the site when the site gets entitled, or they could voluntarily wait until that new zoning is in place.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. It looks like, Commissioner Alper, did you have something else? Commissioner Conley, did you have anything else right now? No, that's okay. All right. I'm not seeing anyone else, so we could call the roll on Commissioner Alper's motion for Item C, a conditional use permit, denying it based on the findings that she established. Is there any more discussion before we do that?
The motion is to deny.
Correct. I guess I'll just say this isn't the first stop for this application and it's certainly not the last stop. I'm having a hard time with this specific finding because we just approved a conditional use permit for a parking garage, the same conditional use permit downtown, so if we're associating all parking facilities with traffic deaths, it seems, it's tricky for me, but, yeah.
Well, Madam President, the, as I recall, the thing we approved earlier reduced the number of vehicles parked, right? Not increased.
All right, Commissioner Alper. Okay. All right, I'm not seeing any more discussion, so I will ask the clerk to please call the roll. Commissioner Alper.
Okay. I hate going first, even though I made the motion, so yes to denial.
Baxley.
Aye.
Campbell.
No.
Conley.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Koski.
Nay.
Marwa.
No.
Myers, absent. Olson.
No.
So that is four yeas and four nays and one. So that motion fails.
Yep.
Okay. Would anyone like to make an alternate motion?
I would like to move that we postpone this to the final June CPC meeting of Tuesday, June 26, and we've heard that that would not mean that the city would need to push back. It's within that 60-day timeline.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second discussion. Commissioner Marwa?
Yeah, I have a question. I guess what, what do we hope to accomplish between now till that, the June date for that amendment? that postponement?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, there's a question for Commissioner.
So, yeah, please, thank you. So there's a number of moving parts happening. There's court, there's other things happening with the city, and I believe that if we were to wait until June 26th, that would give us more time to understand all that's going on. Lots of things could have happened and been signed, sealed, and delivered by then. I just feel like there's too many moving parts right now, and since we do have the timeframe of June 26th to work with, I feel like that's a good next meeting to bring this back before us.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ford.
That, Madam President, that, there was reference to the request for state money for a profitable urban farm here, and the, they will not adjourn until approximately May 22nd, I recall, so we would, we would hear what happened there, too.
Okay. I have a question for staff. If this, or when, if we postpone and this comes back, the public hearing will have taken place today, or, okay, so we closed the public hearing on this item, but we could act on it at a later date. Okay. All right. Let's see, Commissioner Marwa?
Okay, Peter, can you restate that 60-day, the 60-day rule, so we would still be within the 60 days if we do postpone to the 26th? Is that correct? Or they would have to come back at us with a full new application with that mixed-use production zoning?
Under the current timeline and with the applications in front of us, we would need to extend the approval window for another 60 days in order to consider making an action at a later date, but we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Peter, I have another question for you. I'm gonna, I, I, I'm wondering, considering all the different factors that are in the air right now, with the legislative budget requests, with a whole variety of other things, knowing the constraints that we are frequently under when we review applications of this matter, is there a rationale for why the city decided to bring this to this meeting today?
I don't have that rationale. We, as planners in CPED, are just responding to the application in the same way that we would any other application in terms of the timeline.
Okay.
But the applicant could potentially speak to that if the commission wanted to hear from them, but...
Would you like to ask the applicant?
Yeah.
All right, would the applicant please answer that question, if you wouldn't mind?
So, if I can, I think pretty much no matter what path that we're on would require us to stop here, so it's part of the process, kind of no matter what happens with the outlot, with the potential, it'll all need to come through this process.
So my other question then would be, I know we don't like to play around in hypotheticals, but let's say, for instance, that there is a legislative decision made to fund the request made by the Neighborhood Association here. Would our actions today, in a way, impact that request, either the ask or the outcome?
Well, and, and I can't speak to that realm, but it's my understanding that it would need to get rezoned regardless, yeah. If that kind of better feeds, I'm not sure, the zoning and the needs of that process, that would, again, almost go back a little bit, but it would need to get rezoned and put together regardless, yep.
All right. Okay, I'm trying to remember where we are. Oh, we have a motion and a second to postpone. Is there any other discussion, or should we call the roll? All right, I'm not seeing any.
I assume that the motion is to, to lay over the entire, all, the whole report and recommendations.
I believe so, yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Hillary, did you have something before we...
I was just, the clerk and I were just talking that, you know, there is, May 22nd is our next Planning Commission, so that would not be an ideal date to pick, but there is the June 12th Planning Commission date as well, so I just, that's what we were discussing, was just looking at dates on a calendar.
Because we need to choose a date?
You do need to choose the date. We need to choose it to continue it to, and then staff will either write a continuance, like, put forward the report, or write a continuance, depending on where things are at.
Okay. Commissioner Conley, since you made the motion, is there, do you have an opinion on that?
26th is the last meeting in June, and I figure that gives us plenty of time, and it's within the, what staff says that they can...
Sure.
...work with.
All right. So we have a motion to continue these items to the June 26th meeting of the City Planning Commission. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll. Alper.
Aye.
Baxley.
Aye.
Campbell.
No.
Conley.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Koski.
Nay.
Marwa.
Aye.
Myers absent. And Chair Olson.
No.
So that's five yays and three nays. All right, that motion passes, so that item will be continued to the June 26th Planning Commission meeting. All right, that was our last discussion item for the evening. Are there any announcements from staff?
Yes. One second, please. We do have a committee of the whole meeting this Thursday. We will start in here at 4:30. We do have two projects on the agenda, and then we will be retiring at 5:45, or continuing, or concluding, excuse me, at 5:45, walking over to the Public Service Building for the Planning Commission Click Committee meeting that starts at 6:00.
If you guys could please be quiet while we finish up here, thank you. Or take your conversations to the hall.
We do have a minimum, we do have a quorum that we need to meet at 5, because this is a body of the Planning Commission, not of the Committee of the Whole. So if you are not going to be there on Thursday, and I believe we've heard, the only commissioner that we know of that won't be here is Commissioner Marwa, is please let us know so we don't show up to the Click joint meeting and not have a quorum.
I think last time we had three.
Okay, so we need...
We need five.
We need five.
Yeah.
We need five, so we, we need five. So if you absolutely are not going to be there, and you already know, please let us know so we're not scrambling day of. And I think that's it.
All right. Anything else from commissioners before we adjourn? If not, and without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next regular meeting of the Planning Commission will be Monday, May 22nd. However, we will also have the Planning Commission's annual joint meeting of the Capital Long Range Improvement Committee on Thursday, May 11th as well. It's at 6:00 PM in the Public Service Building, Room 100. We will need five. So our next Committee of the Whole meeting will also be this Thursday, May 11th, at 4:30 here in the chambers. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Well, there you go.
Smooth glass of water is what you need.